not properly weatherized. And all of the Rockport, we've got people who have damage to their clothes, severe damage because of the loss of power and the ability to keep the houses. My house is one of them. We've got $100,000 plus in damages, which thank God the insurance company has helped us pay for. So I don't need to detail what happened to all of us in the last week in terms of the foundation of Rockport, in terms of our drainage of storm water, our sewer plant, which overflowed to the tune of 682,000 gallons of sewage, which went rolling down Pearl Street towards our waterfront. We've also heard that because we have inadequate stormwater drainage, Little Bay is dying and filling up. So those of you who know me know that long, long ago, I got my BA in urban planning at University of Buffalo. I have my law degree from Georgetown. I've been a real estate lawyer and a real estate litigation lawyer for 43 years. I never took the Texas bar exam because I didn't work in Texas, but Texas planning and zoning law, I think, very, very much like it is in other advanced cities. So my focus in my eye, which I've expressed previously, is that this ridiculous sophomoric comprehensive plan, which a bunch of college kids from Texas A&amp;M have turned up with the assistance of two of their professors, is probably the worst planning document I've seen in my professional career. Why do I say that? I say that because...
Your three minutes are up.
...and trying to figure it out. And I'm really not too sure why you're afraid of people coming out and speaking to you, but I'll bring it to you if you'll make it.
I'll just ask you a question. And because I can't find you all, I was going to advise you to talk to the county president of the district to make sure they update their records. Because we want to show you.
They've been quite busy with protests and the flood.
Well, it's been a couple of months since you told me.
You gotta make it over once a month. If you don't believe me, I mean, I'm not the one who has a record of lying. Let's make this like true.
Oh, I believe you.
If you believe me, we can do this.
Okay. I believe you do. Thank you. You love...
I'd like to say first, 2201 Prairie Road, I'd like to say first that like, I spoke to somebody and said that you were helping them. Thank you. I appreciate that. Like, good on you. And I've also heard that you went out, Mr. Runred, and hit the pavement and like finding out what's going on. The reason I'm up here is because I read over this thing called the Ranses County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Plan. It's Ranses County, it's Rockport, it's Fulton, it's Ranses Pass. Everybody else is budgeting money to fix our infrastructure. Rockport is the only one who has no money budgeted for our infrastructure. I see Ryan here, I'm sure he's going to do a good dog and pony show today, no offense to him, about like how he got CDG grant, federal dollars, and how they're going to make improvements. And that's fine and great, but it seems to me like we're a bunch of welfare queens. We just wait around for federal money to follow our way instead of making our own investments. If you go through, if you go through the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan, most of the critical infrastructures are unbudgeted. However, it says we're going to use future bonds, but we cannot use future bonds because we decided to use anticipation notes instead of following the letter of the law, and I'll debate that with you later, and going to the voters at the city hall. So we locked ourselves in. So over this time, where have we spent our money? We spent our money on trolleys that don't work. We spent our money on ballfields that aren't used. We spent our money on what? We tried to take out, we had to spend $400 because we lost an ag grant, and we had to make up for the bridge. We had spent $400,000 for this. We tried to spend $600,000 for a new Boy Scout place. We tried to spend $75,000 on a slide. Why are we spending our money not where we need it? It seems to me that the most important thing a city can do is provide for infrastructure. And if we're not going to budget our money for infrastructure and just wait around for the federal government to bail us out, that seems to me to be the epitome of Ronald Reagan's welfare queen. That we don't, we don't put the money in front to take care of things ourselves. We just wait for the federal government to give us money. And then we don't maintain those. And when it fails, we go back and ask the federal government for some more money. Please, as we go forward, look into investing our money wisely, not on stupid things like trolleys and these things. All of these that I've seen, it's the city manager who is encouraging you to spend your money on other places other than infrastructure. If you can't get a city manager who doesn't have the right priorities, get a new city manager.
Can we get a, an idea of how much longer we're going to continue this?
It's a great question. Thank you for asking. I know there's been a lot of questions about why we continue our disaster declarations. If I have a little trouble talking, I went to the dentist today, so a little numb right here. But when I got back to the office today, I received an email from grants@tdm texas.gov. That's the Texas Department of Emergency Management. It says, "Dear Patrick Reams, Rockport's request for assistance for award 2021 CLFRF, which is Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, has been approved." The award will be administered to Texas Division of Emergency Management, and those on and on. Had we not received this grant and continued to keep our disaster declarations in place, we would be funding all of our COVID recovery efforts with tax dollars. This money is being provided by the federal government and the state so that we will be able to recover every penny that's spent on taking care of everything we had due to COVID. That's why we keep the disaster declarations going. So we just got this. I was just able to share with the city manager and our director of finance, but...
We have a, I mean, I put that on crystal ball, you know, in COVID, these are things actually, I believe internationally.
We typically, and correct me if I'm wrong with this, we typically follow the state. As long as the state is continuing their disaster declaration, we will also. But we cut that off at some point if states continue with their disaster declarations. Anytime when that disaster declaration expires, we're no longer eligible for funding. So that's why we keep them there.
And I want to make it clear, because there's, some people have the impression that if we turn down this money, that somewhere in Washington, they take that money back and it somehow, you know, the federal government will buy that a little bit. That doesn't happen. That money that would have been allocated to us gets sucked up and goes to Houston or to New York City or somewhere else to get spent. So the option we have is to continue our disaster declarations as long as the state does. And use that money that is allocated to us, that is our right to have, so we can take care of people's business. Or we can turn it back and still have to take care of people's business and use our local money. And I don't think local people want to use, you know, increase their taxes to pay for it. They probably have the money available just to...
Especially if our money's being sent to you in Dallas, San Antonio, because we don't take it.
And we won't, we won't get a thank you note from New York City.
No. So, and we have, I don't know, I know we can calculate it, keeping it right in total. I have no idea if it was expensive. I mean, we were fogging this building three times a week. We were sanitizing every touch point in the building for employees and what limited public we had coming in three or four times a day. And that was just in this building. We had to maintain those standards all over the city, every street scene. There's quite a bit of expenses involved, of course.
I work for the federal government. Every Monday I have to submit a report on everything that I bought for COVID. Everyone, anything that I've secured for the week prior, I have to submit that. And the orders are keeping the same as everything. CCAD is going to come first, or whatever we have to spend.
But any questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, excuse me, I think you have a card on this one.
Oh, yes.
I intended to speak during the citizens' speaker. But I thank Brad for his query on this. That was good information to hear. Because as I was reading the agenda and saw this agenda item on there, I was opposed to the extension of the declaration. I felt that it would be a setback for our residents and our visitors when we're just starting to achieve a semblance of normalcy. However, I'm satisfied with the explanation you've given, that you still have ongoing costs and those can be mitigated by infringement by the state. The other thing that I was going to speak to during the citizens' speaker is that I believe that proposed comprehensive plan has many flawed assumptions and it needs to be shelved. The concept of co-living especially...
Yes, Ms. Rousseau, we'll get to that when we get to the agenda 50. We'll call you back up.
Okay.
It is, it is my understanding that disaster declaration also includes the sustaining of certain civil rights and civil liberties. I know when this first happened, if I'm correct, a mayor who spoke with Senator Cole Corr's office, and you tried to get her to stop letting second home owners come down during COVID. I also know that, okay, I also know that we tried to hold a rally to inform people about the courthouse in the city hall and use the COVID restrictions and told us we can only have 15 people at our event, when two weeks later, there was an event of thousands of people out on the fairgrounds. I'm not opposed. I'm opposed to using federal, but I'm not, I understand your reasoning. However, if you go through this, is there no way that you can limit what this disaster declaration means and put limits on the mayor and put limits on the local government for the civil liberties that they take away from us now? This is almost Orwellian, you know? We're always at war with East Asia. There's always a state declaration. If we go through this, I'd like to see some, some sort of guarantees that our civil liberties and our rights aren't being restricted just because we're going for federal dollars.
As, as the, the recent flood is fresh in everyone's mind, and that's an open meeting. Anyone that would like to attend that can go over it. It'll be in this, this room, one period on Tuesday. I'm not waiting for the 20th. And I'm looking forward to that. We've got a lot of ready to do. We look forward to staff and also...
The B-10, the zoo, correct?
Yes, can I also?
And just a reminder, we talked about damage. I think it's on the website. The weight to the, to South Rockport, the weight helps state and less return on the total damages, which began opening up the door potentially to citizens. I did see the street crews out to repair portals on Austin Street. So thank you guys for that. It was a, it's going to be an ongoing issue for quite some time. Sorry. Sorry to be so busy.
Anyone else?
I can make a motion to approve. Item 13.
A motion from Ms. Captain?
Second.
Second, Ms. Jackson. Word one?
Aye.
Word two?
Aye.
Word three?
Aye.
Word four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Thank you. And 14. Time 7:08. We're going to call the order to block port planning and zoning commission.
We have a call. Mr. Scott, stakeholders, they've had, they've hired us. There were charades, 405 that were held in the community involving the citizens who said that both citizens were involved in developing this, plus assistance from senior college station and Corpus Christi, Texas Tech, and University School of Law. The, and practitioners, planning practitioners from across country through the American Planning Association. We did hate for this. This would have been something cost well over $100,000. This is a good document. It's already received two boards, statements, and ADA. It's not a perfect document, no document is. It, it is something that, like any company's plan, it's something that needs to be revisited with throughout its lifetime. It's a 20-year document. We don't adopt it and it stays the same for 20 years because certain chances in the environment is staying the same. Thanks for talking about it here, because this is now two years old. Almost, we're already making changes with RV orders, trading landscape orders. Those things are already being devised as a top secret. So this, this is not something that just popped up in this staff group and that group. This is a community-based document that should mention the disaster process over a 14-month period. We're making changes, I've noted in the briefing sheet. Took out some mixed-use areas in the future land use. We updated definitions and the funds we've submitted we've got. But the tide is to adopt this. We can always come back and quickly we can, but we need to adopt the plan.
No.
I'd like to thank everyone that was involved in this, all the citizens who are here. I don't know if anyone in this room was involved in that process. Thank you so much for coming and for helping.
Do you think we should show a hand to anybody in the room who was involved in this process?
I was.
I was.
Thank you.
I was just curious.
I was too. It's a shame.
You didn't. You stayed in the corner and talked.
If we could have some, if we could have some order in this room, please?
Please ask for it, yeah.
If we don't have order, I would ask the police to remove whoever's being unprofessional. Everyone understand that? This is a civil hearing. We're trying to do the people's business in front of the people. Everyone is invited here to participate in a professional way. We look forward to everyone's participation. And we look forward to the comments. That's why we're having this meeting. Meeting is supportive. Everyone's huge, not for the people that want to shout out over everyone else. So thank you very much. And we're going to take comments. Now, this is a public hearing. Yes, sir.
Just as a point of clarification, it's been said multiple times that this was a participatory project of members of the community that started in the summer of 2018. And we had multiple public meetings, and we had lots of folks that participated in this. We had three major universities. We had professionals from the American Planning Association. This wasn't 100% student-driven. There were several members of our community that participated. It's been out for public review and comment for over a year and a half. And within a year and a half, we've had three individuals come forward and make comments. And as stated in the recent briefing sheet, we have made some considerations for changes. And we have added a definition of mixed-use properties. There were concerns from our South Rockport neighbors and our folks over along the borders of the Harbor Oaks subdivision that came in with concerns about the mixed-use designation within their neighborhoods. And we have made some minor changes to the future language map, which has been another point of contention. And those are the areas of concern and the only areas of concern that have been brought to the staff's attention. We continue to review the plan. As the city manager indicated earlier, there are parts of the plan that are already under review and will make any changes. We met in a group of RV park owners within the last month, and we're looking at the possibility of enacting a new RV park ordinance for our community that will be for future growth of RV parks within the community and working with existing parks to ensure that they're protected and that they can continue to maintain their parks and do their business within our community. So we are looking at those types of things. The plan is a roadmap between the community and moving forward with implementation. All the suggestions for future projects are laid out in the plan and intended to be pursued and reviewed by city staff. A couple of recent examples. Just recently, council brought to you a proposal for a restaurant on Loop 1781. All right, we put that proposal through the process, and it was determined by staff, by the planning and zoning commission, and by the city council, that that restaurant was not good for the community. It was not in an area that we thought it was safe for traffic and other issues. And the neighbors in that community came out, enforced, and spoke against it. Another instance is a development off of 2165, behind the Augusta Street area, where we have a developer that's coming in and he's putting in a 55 and older community. And adjacent to those properties, he was asking to rezone B1. And as we all know, B1 zoning means that anything that is a business could go into those properties. And the developer was telling us we're looking at things like boutiques, maybe an office building, and those types of things. So it was recommended through the staff, through the planning and zoning commission and the city council, that we reconsider the B1 designation and maybe go with another, our, I forgot what it was, our five, our seven designation for zoning. There would be a better blend of commercial and residential along the 2165 corridor. The plan is just a plan. It is just that. All cities have a master plan or a comprehensive plan that they follow as a guideline. The plan is a living document that should be reviewed on a regular basis. Each portion of the plan or each chapter of the plan should be reviewed on an annual basis to determine if it's still relevant. And it's the staff's responsibility to work with the planning and zoning commission and the city council and come to you with those reviews. As I stated before, this plan was developed, has been out for over a year and a half for public comment. And today, we've had three people make public comment about the plan. And most of the people that came in have concerns about where they live and what they see when they look out their windows. And everyone has those same concerns. Where you live, how many times have we had people come forward and say, "When I bought my property, I was told that everything around me would stay the same and would be nothing but residential." But then we have developers coming in along the 336 corridor. And they want to come in and they suggest temperature-controlled storage units. And the neighbors come out to force and say, "We don't want that." I was told it was going to be residential. And then another developer comes in on the same property and we go through the process. The plan is a roadmap. It keeps us on the straight and narrow. It keeps the staff alive and keeps the elected officials alive with a process to filter to be ensure the health and safety and the welfare of our community. And every community in the United States needs a plan. So I'll leave it at that, and I'll let everyone else come up and say their business. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, for this, again, this is to protect the community. We need to protect the community, maintain as much of the charm of this area as possible. That's our, that's our duty. Well, let's just, let's get the word on. I have a citizen participation form marked at the board record. I oppose the approval of the comprehensive plan as written and request that you do the same. Plan does not provide for protection and preservation of our wetlands, shorelines, shorelines, trees, and historical areas. Is outlined by the mixed-use designation and transportation obstacles. Approval of this plan will guide long-term decisions that will be irreversible. Preservation needs to start at the local level and must not be pushed to the state and federal agencies after the fact. My understanding is that we will be legally bound to comply with the plan as written. Texas Local Government Code, Section 11.004, compliance with comprehensive zoning. Zoning regulations to be adopted in accordance with comprehensive plan must be designed to one. Lessened congestion in the streets to securely, secure safety from fire, panic, and other dangers. Three, promote health and the general welfare. Four, provide adequate light and air. Five, prevent overcrowding of land. Six, avoid undue concentrations of population. Or, seven, facilitate adequate positions of transportation, water, and services to schools, parks, and other functional requirements. The plan as written does none of these. Please help our community grow responsibly and preserve our natural resources by holding no... Second item. Lori Alaman. She's at 1120 South Austin. It is my understanding that there will be a discussion on the proposed comprehensive plan this evening. I hope this email will be sufficiently heard. I have one South Rockport next to the dilapidated Oceanview Hotel. I am strongly opposed to the mixed-use rezoning of our little charming neighborhood. Our colorful homes are mostly on stilts. Preserve the charm of our community is one of the reasons I purchased here just shy of two years ago. Please consider keeping the mixed-use property for downtown and not in our South Rockport neighborhood. With a record, will there ever be fault or accountability for updating or tearing the ocean view? Such an eyesore. Thank you in advance. Next item is from Mary Lynn Rhodes, nine St. Andrews Place in Rockport. She has a statement to be read in. I do not feel that the current zoning for residential areas needs to be adjusted. This term, multi-use, term, anything. There are no guidelines. It's much too early to vote on this. There needs to be discussion with the community. The old churches, the Catholic club, women's club, yacht club, they have a need for the community. We have flooding in our community that needs to be addressed long before we discuss the site. Our community cannot take care of the current residents' needs. How can we discuss adding a multi-use? The study may and can and will be interpreted by whoever is in office. That is not a good thing. That is not what's best for our community. One from Pat Rousseau. If you're showing up to come up and speak on it, I'm going to do it.
I believe that this proposed comprehensive plan has many flawed assumptions and needs to be shelved. The concept of co-living may be acceptable to the college students who helped prepare the report, but it is a concept that is not attractive to the population currently living in our rural community. We need to implement viable suggestions that are found in our previous plans, which would address current flooding and drainage issues before we look to adopt another plan. Thank you.
Have this read into the comprehensive plan. He wishes, he says, "I wish my ward three council rep Brad..." I'm sorry. Start over. This is Commander Kane at 2106 Lakeview Drive in Rockport. He wants to speak on my part. I have the meeting. He says, "I wish my ward three council rep Brad Runred read my statement as I'm out of state and unable to attend tonight."
Lucky me. It starts with, "I am out of state and unable to attend. I filled the citizen participation form out online. I wish to have my council rep read into the record my statement on the comprehensive plan. I have been told by city and elected officials recently that the comprehensive plan is just a recommendation and carries no final decisions. That current and future city council members will have the final say on zoning and other road issues. But this is just not true, and I hope you will take my comments with all seriousness." In Section 211 of the State Property Code, under compliance with comprehensive plan, it clearly states, zoning regulations must be adopted in accordance with the comprehensive plan. This state law does not say "may," it says "must." There is even a relevant, there is even relevant court cases where cities were sued by developers to rezone and follow their comprehensive plan. In Matthew, the town of Sunnyvale, it was decided in 1998, the comprehensive plan must serve as the basis for zoning amendments. In short, Sunnyville had minimum 1-inch of lot sizes. They were defeated in court because their comprehensive plan called for a road, but minimum lot sizes made that impossible. They were forced in court to allow section eight apartments to be built that the city had been declining. Farvee Tippit ruled that law forbids actions by cities that disregard long-range master plans. So adopting this plan would absolutely have the potential for someone forcing 22-inch square foot tiny lot sizes and 500-inch square foot tiny homes all over town because it was recommended... because it was recommended in the comprehensive plan. Mixed use in current R one single-family home zoning can be changed through just about anything because we don't have a legal zoning ordinance defining mixed use. Mixed use in reality is just no zoning said politically correct. Mixed use means we can decide later. The plan will decide the zoning change request ultimately, not city council. I recommend stalling the entire action on this plan until everyone, citizens, city staff, and council have all read and completely agreed with every detail on this plan. If there's anything you don't agree with as a current council, you need to have it redlined out. Passing this plan limits all future city councils that follow you for decades. Basically, college students and academia that don't live here will have decided via this plan what is best for Rockport for the next twenty years. Surely, you do not agree with that. Start over and let's do this plan ourselves for ourselves.
Eleven oh eight South Austin Street, Rockport, Texas. You wish this to be read into the record. Coastal South Rockport cannot survive mixed-use development, high-density, or an opportunity zone as proposed just south of the downtown area, pages sixty-five and sixty-six. Those would destroy the small-town charm. This residential neighborhood had primarily single-family homes, routinely flooded several times a year. Commercialization would exacerbate, exacerbate risk vulnerability and impact on already-stressed playgrounds, page twenty-six. Number two, cannot handle paving parking lots, crowds, traffic, large ground-level construction, or apartment-type housing. Range to a rent space already takes hours or days after each range bump. Instead, conservation or preservation of existing empty lots as a rent's capital sites would be more minimal to improving stormwater management, page twenty-five. Cannot accommodate the construction of housing that's co-living urban-style social experience or large numbers of unrelated low-income individuals, including proposed social services such as onsite shopping, entertainment, restaurants, bars, offices, parking, and public transportation. It simply cannot handle more residential development near the downtown. Without exponentially increasing hazards in the area, development of increased-density STRs, which is tourist, or affordable LTRs for the local workforce would be less harmful and more appropriate inland, away from the severely stressed bays and closer to the arch areas. Number four, as R one, R two, and R six zones should remain residential and not be evaluated by wholesale rezoning mixed use. Many single-family homes are actively decoded by ACAD, A-C-A-D, than by Rockport for actual land use. These properties should not risk having more empty parks next to them. Number five, will not always survive or thrive if and when the revised and thoughtful future land use map, page forty, becomes the overarching directive and guiding vision for promoting continued construction of single-family homes, but no mixed use. One oh nine, Broadwalk Avenue, Rockport. She wants this read into the record. Mayor, Council, and planning and zoning officers, I'm asking you to vote against the proposed comprehensive plan as it has been presented. I have followed some of the social media accounts and an email from a city PNC member that stated the comprehensive plan is just a suggestion and not a, is not binding for future developments. I have a unique perspective on this issue. I was a city council member in Sunnyvale, Texas, a small town outside of Dallas. Some people know the bedroom community for its appeal, wide-open spaces, and neighbor's lots. Others know the town from the Mayhew versus Sunnyville court case where a developer used the comprehensive plan as a weapon against the council. And PNC, when he proposed breaking his acreage into high-density subdivisions, his acreage was zoned residential with minimum one-acre lots. This case went on for years and the town eventually settled the case. I was on the council when the case was settled. I can tell you the comprehensive plan is absolutely binding. It is used as a starting point for discussions when developers approach staff. It is reviewed when design elements are evaluated. It is checked for the strategy and direction the town would like to grow. It becomes your guideline and map as stated in the old statement for what is a comprehensive plan. Please take the time to thoroughly review this plan. Remove the high-density and big city urban ideas. Insert guidelines to encourage developers to develop natural habitats and dwellings. Require developers to mitigate storm runoff within their area and not on neighboring roads and corridors. Plan for a city in potential ETJ areas that preserve the unique characteristics that make Rockport desirable to residents and prisoners, boating, fishing, bird watching, and store pace. Read into the state, read into the record. I am not able to attend the hearing due to my wife's illness. My property backs up to a large single-honor tract previously owned by Ted Sorenz and now by Barry Wilk and Art Brooks that is proposed to be rezoned for mixed use. I do not, I did not buy my house to be boarded by apartments or hotels or a shopping center. Art Brooks has always been a single-family residential area with strong neighborhood and deep restrictions. But if the city allows this change, it is tantamount to betrayal of all of us who own property that surround this tract. It already is inconprehensible. City planners seem to be being allowed in proposed change to appear in a proposal. I strongly object to this proposed change and fully expect the proposal to change immediately. That tracks single-family license. David Merle.
Starting now with the South Rockport plan.
Yes.
That's a good place to start. I had something kithy and biting on this period that I'm going off script. That one thing alone is worth so much. We all have to play together nicely. And in society, we all give up something, we all have to give up to get something. This document isn't going to be perfect. We've got a border that's wide open. Citizens are angry because they don't listen to me. That spawns anger. We have schools teaching critical race theory, and the parents are being ignored, and it spawns anger. And the thing that all of you on the council should have heard is that mixed-use zoning is something that people here don't want. You have to listen to that. I implore you, if you don't hear anything else. Mixed-use zoning, rezon, mixed-use rezoning is a wholesale rezoning. And while I respect what you said about the document, the age of the document, what you said about the citizen input, in August of twenty eighteen, a lot of us were digging out a Harvey. A lot of us were helping the neighbors dig out a Harvey, and a lot of people didn't participate that we might have. But I understand that the document is a guideline, but if you don't hear anything else, mixed-use zoning is not one we don't feel like, and we know the theory of mixed-use zoning. The idea of walkable neighborhoods so that you can live in a neighborhood, go to work in the neighborhood, go to the grocery store in the neighborhood, go to the drugstore in the neighborhood and walk, is not going to work here. And so mixed-use zoning amounts to undoing zoning that we already have. That's a serious step. And when this many people say, "That's not the Rockport we want to live in," please listen to that. The document, I don't care if I agree with all of it. I know I'm not going to. I would agree with all of it if I wrote it, but the age of the document is in the paper. If there's something in there that doesn't belong in there, we need to take it out. That one thing moves together. Thank you.
In fact, this whole plan needs to be done. But high-density housing, apartments, and offices where it belongs, I want to bypass for starters. Keep Rockport charming, do not, and do not, and not big-city BS with big-city developers. Thank you from Ward One Resident, totally opposed to this plan. Let the residents of Ward One decide your neighborhood, not out-of-town students and developers, especially members of which are not our interests. Thank you.
And I'm a resident in Ward Three and also vice president of the ACIST.
Your address, also.
Oh, four zero three Trailer Boulevard.
Thank you.
So I'm a resident in Ward Three and also vice president at the ACIST school board. Since I am one of seven trustees, I cannot speak on behalf of the board. So I'm here tonight as a resident who is strongly opposed to both the proposed comprehensive plan and the tax rate increase, which I'll be back up on that. Both are sensitive topics to the local community and to the school district. The comprehensive plan encourages our elected officials to create an efficient, equitable, and safe and sustainable community. If you, as a city council member, approve the proposed comprehensive plan as it is written, you are not creating any of this. You are continuing to cater to the needs and wants of our tourists. The Chamber has done a fabulous job of promoting Rockport. They have put us on the map and the tourists will continue to come and visit Rockport as the coastal gem it is today. Developing Rockport based on three current scenarios presented in the comprehensive plan will put the locals of Rockport looking for affordable housing in our neighboring areas. With the loss of these families comes the loss of students that are enrolled in ACIST. Losing these students will continue to raise the recapture rate known as Robin Hood that ACIST has to pay back to the state each year using the local taxpayers' dollars.
Also, I want to kind of follow up on the comprehensive plan. Why only three people have stated anything currently? When we were here opposing for the fourteen-acre development behind us, the HUD, we had to search for that comprehensive plan, and we couldn't find it. It just got put on the city's website recently. So that is why you're just now hearing from everyone.
Right.
Yes. I'll be back.
Resident twelve five Eastern Lane in Rockport. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Kathy Henderson. I have lived in Rockport all my life, except for the four years I was in college. I am a fourth-generation Rockport Orange County resident. My husband and I raised our two children here because we love Rockport and the community and what it has represented. I am coming to you tonight to ask for your consideration and not understanding and approval of the comprehensive plan as written. I have particular interest in where the mixed-use zoning areas will be approved. If they are cleared in the middle of an existing residential area, that is not right or fair for the residents to have made their homes there. A mixed-use facility will bring in traffic noise and change the environment where people have made their homes. I am asking that you look at any zoning changes, I'm sorry, I'm asking that you look at any zoning changes that the city has passed, each one individually, and review who the changes affect, the vibe that the changes affect, and our overall beauty of Rockport that is known for. There are plenty of properties in the city that are, that can be used as mixed-use facilities that would make a plus for the city. This is not in residential areas. If this plan is not an option of zoning changes, and I apologize, let's still make recommendation, a rezoning for mixed-use facilities, we look there closely of where they are and who they will affect. Thank you for your consideration.
Can you probably get your name, ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry. Kathy Marks, a four-four-five with us to join Rockport, Texas, number three eight two. So I was looking over the comprehensive plan, and I just kind of want to highlight a few things that I read in the comprehensive plan, if that's okay. Two thousand sixteen, over sixty-five percent of vacant housing was recreational and seasonal. In comprehensive plan, it states, "The continued development of these units drives up housing and land prices, and it challenges the development of affordable units for year-round residents." Per HUD, affordable housing is any, it has to be less than thirty percent of the annual income household annual income. According to the comprehensive plan, the annual household income for Rockport is forty-seven thousand dollars, according to Call of Forty Eight. We break that down to less than thirty percent, that's eleven hundred dollars a month, at the max. So the average citizen should not be paying more than eleven hundred dollars a month. Average, like silver, compliment our average household income. Sixteen point three percent of our residents are in poverty level. At the time, we had two schools that needed improvements for the Texas Education Agency Accountability Rating, that was two thousand seventeen. One of those schools is now blocked. That was a little bit primary, unfortunately. My kids aren't there. Broke apart. Our infrastructure is failing. We have sinkholes before the, before the big rain last week. We already have sinkholes, we have potholes. We know that our wastewater-trailer plant is aged, and it's already at its break. Now the waters, I understand what happened last week had to do with the flood, the flood precedent of flooding. I get it. I'm not saying that's, you know, I get that part. But our infrastructure needs work, in my opinion. And what I saw in the comprehensive plan was, "Let's promote more ecotourism. Let's make some RV parks." Well, I guess we could because that's where most of us were going to have to live. Because I bought a house right after Harvey, I was blessed enough because we lost our condo and we had to live, like everyone else, somewhere that wasn't ours. And I'd take my kids to Cal Allen and whatever, that was hard, but I had other clockbacks of crap. But we were blessed enough to be able to come back to our hometown where I went to elementary school, where I went to high school, so we could have our kids here. And in that time, my taxes have increased so much, I don't stand for the leader. My point is, I'm not against the plan as a whole, but I feel we need to focus on our residents. Bringing in boutiques, that's minimum wage. We're back to people can't afford to live here. That's my point. Look at what our affordable housing currently is and see what people have to make to afford that housing, and we don't have to comply with those jobs at that rate, and we have to increase our housing value. Thank you for your time.
Rockport zoning code, because I wanted to know what mixed-use or mixed-use development meant. And yes, well, we don't have an ordinance that spells it out. So let's think of some crazy ideas. Can somebody build a taxidermy store behind my neighbor's house? Can somebody include a scientific lab that uses explosive chemicals and materials? We have protection in R one. We have protection through our conditional use permit ordinance that requires that a discretionary decision not be made by the city if it will harm the surrounding property owners. Mixed use, we have no idea what in the world you're approving, and I don't think you do either. I'll tell you two things. To write a competent mixed-use ordinance, you're looking at at least a hundred thousand dollars in legal fees. And you're going to have a bunch of developers waving their hands and saying, "Oh, we'll pay it. We just want it to be what, what it will make us happy." Well, I'll tell you something. We're not going to stand for that. And you're asking for trouble in two different ways. First of all, you're enacting a planning category with no matching zoning. So is some smart-ass developer and his lawyer, like me, Philo Lawson, saying, "You have to rezon this property to whatever I want under the mixed-use definition, or you're violating my constitutional property rights." So we'll spend another hundred thousand defending that. And we'll end up with some people whispering in the ear of our lawyers, and they will take a dive, because I've said, I've been watching it happen for forty-three years of my life. So just to top it off, if we want federal money for housing, we have to repeal, suspend, or abolish our R one zoning because in the infrastructure plan that's pending before Congress right now, it says, "Our R one zoning is racist," words to use that are a little bit fancy, but that's what it means, and we can't have a dime of federal housing money or can a non-cropary developer unless we get rid of R one. Well, I didn't move here to get rid of R one. I got moved here to have a nice green lot and trees around my house and not to look at a concrete block wall and not to have rainwater from zonal nurseries flowing into my street and my neighborhood.
I don't know where the park, the park was started in March. Been through that. Ira Haggie and my dad was a master plumber, so I'm thinking I can help out with strange stuff. We got either Lord in Bay or racing grave. That's real simple. Now, he comes behind all these ladies who can really speak so well. My son, Kevin, was at A M College Station, which I think is a pretty conservative university. He was a sophomore, and he turned in a paper that was his beliefs and his professor had advised him against speaking that way if he built a course. And I think that many of these students, God bless them, they're kind of saying what the professor wants them to say. They're led by liberal professors, and that's what I have to say about that.
A couple weeks ago, I went to talk with Dr. Garcia, the superintendent at our schools, of our schools. I worked twenty, twenty-five years in school districts and school boards and school teachers with interest in providing insurance for our teachers. And what I...
And what I gave to him, and I know he's brand new, and I gave him some information that I hope that he brought to the school board. Because in the, I'm not sure it's in this plan, but in the thirty year plan and stuff it was talking about, that we needed low income housing and we would go out to others, other cities and advertise for example, companies, low income places. And if they did that, they said to the average person that's in those slow, oh, one-on-one, income places, it's a thirty-eight year old woman with two schoolchildren. And that would bring in thirty-eight hundred and ten new students, a hundred and forty percent increase to our school districts. We currently have two hundred and seventy-seven special ed students and it's going to go up to about four hundred or something like that. And those people take one-on-one, I'm going to hurry and try to get some more in here. I'm confused about, we tabled part of the zoning thing of that, the RV part, and I've been communicating with a bunch of you and has some really good results. We have, I have learned something we're going to spread among the RV owners. And we're going to help a lot with our policing and because we've been doing it wrong and as a civil thing, it's going to be now the criminal thing and we're going to clean up a lot of people. This is going to help clean the Rockport. The one Rockport can be a place that has a reputation of being tough on these people. The last thing I have to say is, we tabled the RV thing until August tenth. Well, we talked about that we have eighteen months that we've had, we either had Harvey or we had pandemic. How can we possibly have attended all these meetings and paid attention to that because we had, we had our home wars? We couldn't come to these meetings because they were, we've had a chance of being fairly ill.
Thank you, Mr. Roy.
Therefore, that's what I was going to say. I would ask the council to table this motion until we've had some more time to study the swing because I don't think anyone knows the whole.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Section two.
Allows forward.
Thank you.
Going above that three and a half percent cap in a case of disaster. What I'm suggesting is that we not take action on this because the statute, Sentinel two also allows small communities to establish the minimalist rate. Last year, with the values of every time, the minimalist rate for us was eight point nine nine percent. We only went up to four percent. So we have my section forty, we have already established a minimalist rate. I don't know what that is. I have to let, have a tax assessor capitalize every form. So this particular issue I'm intending to drive out, we don't have to take action. We can just go with the minimalist rate, which is applied before my station already.
Any questions?
No. So. Do we have any questions regarding the ego?
Citizens to be heard.
Sorry.
We need to be heard.
So thank you for educating me the other day in the office on this. I just wanted to say that, so this is just giving the tax assessor the ability to go from the three point five and no new revenue up to eight percent, which is the disaster declaration. And we'll get, you know, it will get a range through there, you'll get a range and it'll say three percent for whatever, whatever it may be. And then comes back to council and then we decide on the actual tax rate later on. Correct?
Right, that's what this does. And I'm saying also is we don't need this. We're a small community under the provisions of the statute. We are already taking care of that and then this rate complexion, we don't need this.
But we're not voting on a eight percent tax rate.
Correct?
No, we're not voting on any.
We're just running, we're just running the numbers so that when we get to the budget workshops, you guys, if you have the batteries, what's, thank you.
Fred, you have one-on-one hybrid drive in Rockport. She's got item here, statement to be read in the record. The state should adopt option one, three and a half percent, no new rate, no new revenue rate for Texas property code, section two, twenty-six point oh four, C two B, item eighteen. City council adopt option one, three point five order approval tax rate. Next one is from Candace Sargent, two fourteen Portia Avenue, Rockport. Has a statement to be read in. Whenever we hear the words disaster declaration, we cringe. Seems it is always used to forward agenda without the overall approval. Why is it never helping taxpayers and residents during these disasters? During the COVID lockdowns, the leverage for small businesses and business owners of Rockport suffered from loss of income, losing their businesses while getting hit with higher prices, stretching the dollar and cutting way back is what they had to do. You know who wasn't affected by the shutdown? City employees, county employees and our government all got affected. I'll write something to the taxpayers who these disasters are lowering tax rates or lowering front protections or at least hold off tax rates. Something, anything to help your residents during disasters. But alas, we don't have faith in what happened. It's two weeks reported agenda got the S P board approved. Statement to be read in the record. Mr. Roy, is it one eighty-three Harrow Oaks in Rockport? Item eighteen, opposed to yet another tax increase. And here too, I especially object to the disaster excuse to invoke to justify an increase.
Permission of a tax increase. As I understand it, tonight's vote is to give our tax assessor the ability to run the numbers up to eight percent to see what the city can possibly receive from this possible tax increase. I believe the state's intent for the ability to increase the tax rate this much without voter approval was for those cities who actually suffered a loss in tax revenue during this time. The tax increase would help them make up some of the loss revenue to pay for the expenses they incurred during the pandemic. However, Rockport was inundated with tourists flocking here to vacation and isolate themselves from the big cities. I would imagine our sales tax income was higher than any normal year during the pandemic months. Based on the property tax collection rate, there was no possible.
I'm glad for what y'all had to go through in this last great event as a city employee myself. I know what it's like and it's not that much fun. So thank y'all for doing what y'all do and doing what y'all had to do and did for those citizens of the city of Rockport. Second, I would really like to encourage everybody to come to that meeting, our training meeting workshop, twentieth at one thirty. Lots fresh on everybody's mind. Drainage is, it's an issue on our county. We do live just above sea level and what we are trying to do, our water is just trying to get that water to the other water. So we have some issues, we know that, but some things are cost prohibitive, costs a lot of money for drainage. So, but I would like to encourage y'all to come and be part of that meeting. I do welcome, I'd like to say thank y'all for all coming and participating in this meeting. It's really good to see some citizens participation. Thank y'all.
I was saying about the, it was very busy. I'm sure the mayor will touch on what was going on, what we're doing. Thank you to everybody else. Thank you to the state for sending out the resources to us. They sent out the three different task teams, task force teams to come out and actually one, they actually did use one resource to go actually get a body out of an RV. So they actually used a repo to do that. So again, thank you. And yes, next Tuesday will be great and we'd love to see everybody here. Love to see everybody here before we start budget hearing because budget hearing is something that we never see anybody. All right? So the amount of people that are here now, I'd love to see y'all here for that as well.
What's that?
On the second.
Yeah, so that's all right.
Andrew Clay first. I'm going to talk about this little festivity we had over Fourth of July called Art Fest. Amazing success, all kinds of people, great things going on. It was a beautiful thing. I volunteered at the front gate, had a great time, so. Now, I am Ward one, which means all we talk about is drainage and flooding. And there are still spots out in Ward one, be careful. There are still spots that have a lot of water on the road. Be very careful. Most of it's down roads, but they flooded up against Ward one itself, so just be careful. Please come to the meeting on Tuesday, August first. Anytime we have a meeting, come on down. We like seeing all your smiley faces. And I appreciate everybody's comments tonight. Thank you much.
In the tax rate generates about, depending on the appraisal value, it can be ninety and a hundred thousand dollars in annual revenue for the city. So we have a three percent or three cent tax rate. You know, at a rate of forty cents, if you're looking at a four percent increase, that's a couple pennies. That's the increase that we're looking at generating for the city is about here, about two hundred thousand dollars approximately. What's the legislation cost today, Mike?
Three hundred thousand dollars.
And drainage, these drainage projects.
Hundred thousand dollars.
You're talking about millions of dollars we've got on master drainage. That's the hard. Anything else?
What's good, Eric?
Motion in segment, all in favor?
Aye.